I'd like to call the General for me to mean to all, if I may please, rise for the prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to gather together this evening. We're very happy to have our National Academic Games Team with us after another very successful trip, and we also pray for our seniors who graduated last week. We are grateful to their parents for entrusting them to us for their education, and we pray that each student is able to pursue his or her best possible dream into the future. Bless each graduate, Father, and we pray that each of them understands that they will each be a part of us forever. These things we pray in your name.
Amen. Ms. Dyser will lead us in pledge, please.
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic of which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, and every being just as well.
Ms. Boche, roll call, please.
Ms. Azovado is not with us, Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Egan.
Here.
Mrs. Jackson is not with us, Mrs. Lemoine.
Here.
Mrs. Dyser.
Here.
Mr. England.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Smith is not with us, Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Mrs. White.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Boche. Item number four is presentation of the 2019 Academic Games National Team Members. Good evening, Ms. Lometta.
Good evening. Of course, I have the pleasure of presenting back to you the National Academic Games Team Members and their coaches with the successful time they had at the tournament. As you know, they went to Orlando, Florida this year at the end of April and beginning of May and competed in three days of intense competition with over 2,000 participants in these games, and most of the individual games included nearly or over 250 competitors in each. Now, for this reason, Aglowa recognizes individual players who finish in the top 20, and in some games, the participants were so large, they gave medals to teams placing up to seventh place. So what I'd like to do now is list the awards for which our teams earned a medal and/or a thinker. So our national team members earned President's Seventh Place Team Medal Award, President's Fifth Place Team Medal Award, President's Fourth Place Team Medal Award, Onsets, we had an individual perfect score and a third-place individual winner with a bronze thinker. Propaganda, we had a third-place team award winning a bronze thinker, and in propaganda, we had a national championship, first place in the nation team award, winning the coveted gold thinker. So overall, tremendous success by the group. Now, the national championship was won by the high school team in propaganda, and we all know that took a tremendous amount of work from the elementary, middle, and high school coaches along the way, so we always attribute the success the whole way down. And some of our coaches were actually game judges, they were appeals panel judges, they were division coordinators, and we have an Aglowa board member. So in addition to our players, our district was represented extremely well at all levels by all. So before announcing the coaches and the players, I would like to say that once again, the players represented our district extremely well as people and not just players. They're not only tremendous competitors, but they're tremendous people and fantastic teammates, and for this, I really would like to acknowledge their parents at this time. And finally, you know we benefited greatly this year from the generous support of the Chalmers High School High Flying Owls Club. They did step in and give a donation which enabled the team to travel to the national competition and greatly defrayed the cost of the trip for the players and the parents, so I can't express enough how much that generosity really helped the team out so they could focus on studying and earn these tremendous awards. I'd just like to thank them again at this time.
Oh, yeah.
And now, it's my pleasure to begin presenting the teams, the coaches, and their awards. So we will start with the elementary division. We have the elementary team coach, who was the National Onsets Division Coordinator for Elementary, National Onsets Appeals Panel Judge for Elementary, National Equations Competition Judge, and had a 13th place propaganda individual award winner, Ms. Melinda Hall.
It's actually the opposite way. What is it?
She must be left-handed. Left-handed.
And now, the elementary team members, Nahar Abdallahak. Our next elementary team member is Trey Myers. He is currently at the Young Authors Award Ceremony, so he's not here at this time, but if he gets his award in time, he will try to make it here. So we're going to put his award on the side. Yes, congratulations, Trey. And next, we have Kimberly Quintanilla.
Good job, Christian.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Christian.
And Winnie Lee, 13th individual award, propaganda, 13th place. Now, we also did have Ms. Lori Gilchrist attend with the elementary team as well. I did want to recognize her as well. For the middle division, they had a 20th place individual propaganda award, 15th place president's individual, two 11th place propaganda awards, third place onsets individual, third place propaganda team award, and a seventh place president's team award, and we have Coach Gina Azovado. And now, we have the players, Rhea Espiritu. Rhea had a third-place propaganda team and a seventh-place president's team. And next, we do have 20th place propaganda individual, Kobe Barrow, who may not be with us tonight, he may be here joining us later as well, from the Young Authors. An 11th place propaganda individual award, Selena Lee. 15th place president individual and 11th place propaganda individual, Ava Volante. And earning a perfect score in onsets, leading to playoffs, and third place in the nation bronze thinker award, Andrew Wee. Now, for the high school team, they had an eighth-place propaganda junior individual, a 10th-place propaganda junior individual, fifth-place president senior team award, 10th-place propaganda senior individual, fifth-place propaganda senior individual, third-place president senior individual overall, fourth-place president senior individual overall, ninth-place president senior individual, 11th-place president senior individual, and national championship in propaganda. For that, we have Coach Julian Christman and Isabel Gonzalez. And we have the high school team members, Ethan Gilchrist. And we have high school team member Russell Kelly, who could not be with us tonight, but I did want to acknowledge him. And with an 18th place propaganda individual award, Caleb Myers. And 10th place propaganda individual award, Dakota Severs. And with fifth-place president team award, a national championship propaganda team award, Nicholas May. Fifth-place president team award, national championship propaganda team award, and 15th-place individual award, Grace Bartholomay. And fifth-place president's team award, national championship propaganda team award, and 10th-place propaganda individual award, Erin Larrea. And with fifth-place president's team award, national championship propaganda team award, 11th-place individual president's individual award, fourth-place propaganda individual award, Emily Vu. And with the fifth-place president's team award, national championship propaganda team award, ninth-place president's individual, and third place in the nation in propaganda individual, Leanne DeCulo. And we have our Chalmers High alumni, who came to us with a national president's reader, middle division, national propaganda reader, middle division, national onsets competition coordinator, and appeals panel judge, middle division, national equations competition, middle appeals panel judge, and a Glower board member, Ryan Gregoire.
That's more impressive than you want to breathe.
And I think we have one more.
Ms. Lometta.
Driving force behind all of this, and who has coordinated these events for so many years and led this effort for more years than I can count, congratulations and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. It's an honor and a pleasure. Thank you.
If you would take these, too?
Yes, thank you. Sure will.
As for the board, we'd just like to thank all these young students for making our school district shine, because it takes a lot of effort and a lot of discipline on their part to do this all the time. And also, for the coaches, we would give you a very special thank you, because it takes you to put everything together and to also make us shine. And for the parents, I can't thank you enough for sending your children to our school district. Thank you.
And if I could just add that, you know, we say the same thing every year, we are just astounded by not just the number of awards that this great team brings back, but as Ms. Lometta said in the beginning, such wonderful young people that they are, tremendous competitors, but tremendous teammates, and just very good people of very high character, which we value just as highly. And it makes it so wonderful when we see a team grow up and then our senior team winning the national championship, which is not a very easy feat. So we want to congratulate all of our team members and coaches, and like Mr. England said, thank you, parents, very much for being so supportive of the entire effort, and we want to give a real shout-out to the High Flying Owl Fund for coming in and helping send this team to national competition. So I know they're going to be very happy when they hear the achievements of this particular group. So, thank you.
Ms. Dyser, did you hear something you want to say?
Ditto to all that, but also, I just want to say, Ms. Lometta said that these are wonderful students, and they truly are, and parents, you're wonderful also, and coaches, we know you go way beyond the call of duty and all the hours of practice, and students, we know you do too. And we just want to congratulate everyone, but also say that each one of the children or students tonight who came up, everyone to a T, said thank you. They're very polite, upstanding, and just wonderful students, so they really make you proud, so congratulations to all, and keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations again to the entire group, and I just want to say a special congratulations to the seniors. We've watched you grow over the years from the elementary, middle, junior, and now senior division. Thank you for coming back tonight after your graduation to participate in the ceremony. We're so proud of all your accomplishments. Please don't be strangers. Come back, visit, come back, and maybe consider being a helper at academic games practices, following the footsteps of Mr. Gregoire. So thank you so much. We are so incredibly proud of you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you all. Move on to item number five, super news. Mr. Alice Snyder, how are you? Good evening.
Good evening. It's good to be back with you all.
Yes.
I just want to say thank you to Barry Lemoine and Jack Jackson of Penn TV for taking over while I was out on maternity. I'm glad to see you. You have your communications report for the month of May.
Just breaking in a minute, actually, we have the reason for your leave here with us, who is being so good, little Miss Emmy Schneider, so she'll be one of our future academic games players.
Hopefully so. She was taking notes. She was taking notes. So in your folders, you all have the communications report for May. On the front, you'll see your social media engagement for the last month. Again, reach is how many people saw, and engagement is how many people actually clicked on the post or shared or so on and so forth. When you flip the page, you'll have, that is the snapshot of the website engagement for the year from last May to this May, and you'll kind of see that, you'll begin to see that some of that engagement is going to taper off a little bit as we get into the summer months, which is normal, we've seen that in years past, and it'll ramp back up in July when we get closer to the beginning of school. This month's super news is going to focus on some of the great things happening throughout our school districts, but I did just want to highlight some of the summer programs that you all have to look forward to in the month of June. Particularly, we have our summer swim program, which we've had every year for the past several years. This is our second year of STEM Camp at the MoMA Center, our summer reading program, summer skills. This year, we're also doing an IXL and Lexia Summer Challenge to keep students engaged in reading and math, and of course, the Performing Arts Academy, all of which is going to be featured on tonight's super news, so I'm not going to go too much longer before we jump into that. And I also just wanted to mention and highlight tomorrow's graduations for our kindergarten, 5th grade and 8th grade students. You'll notice that the times are at the bottom. You can always check school websites for the specific time. The elementary times will vary between 8:30 and 9:00 a.m. tomorrow, and I did just make a mention of Tris Middle School's location.
Could we just interrupt a moment? One of our young people has come in from the, I guess, Young Authors Contest, and we'd like to recognize him as another academic game member, so we want to give him his...
Mr. Trey Myers was able to come from the Young Authors Competition.
Congratulations. And thank you for coming over.
And you're also a young author.
Glad you made it.
Okay, so at the bottom of your sheet, you do have the ceremony times for tomorrow's events for kindergarten, 5th grade, and 8th. You can find specific times and more information on the individual school websites, particularly for the elementary, which the kindergarten ceremony will fluctuate between 8:30 and 9:00 o'clock. So without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to Jack in the back for this month's super news. Barry didn't even write that.
It's time for super news.
Hi, I'm Alex Schneider.
And I'm Barry Lemoine, and welcome to the Chalmers High School Bridge and to super news, where we take a look at all the good things going on in our school district.
We'll kick things off with a look at the success of our academic games team, who recently returned from Orlando for this year's national tournament. Our big news is that our senior propaganda team won a coveted golden thinker as the nation's number-one team. Our four national teams also have several top-five finishes in a number of competitions. We are very proud of our players and appreciate our coaches for their commitment, and we thank the High Flying Owls Club for your financial support of our team.
Good job and very inspiring. Oh, and speaking of inspirational, how about the seven St. Bernard students who were recently recognized as Cox Inspirational Heroes? These young people have defied the odds to overcome academic and real-life challenges. These heroes were honored at the Puncher Train Center during the annual Cox Inspirational Student Heroes Awards Program. Congratulations to these unsung student heroes who are being such positive role models.
And speaking of role models, let's meet a pair of students who truly represent Bulldog pride, as we will head to LaCoste for their super news segment.
Hi, I'm Carly.
And I'm Carson, and welcome to LaCoste Elementary School for our edition of super news.
Our segment today will focus on a few of the things that are new to our school this year, like our Monday morning assemblies. Monday Morning Assembly is designed to help build our school community. Each week, we gather to highlight all the special things that are happening in our building. During assembly, we celebrate birthdays, student of the month, students that complete Lexia, Zern, and Fast Math programs, and other positive news about the great things going on at our school. It's a great way to kick off the week and show our Bulldog pride.
Halloween, Teddy Gras, Teddy Five! Be happy, Teddy Five! Halloween, Teddy Gras, Teddy Five! Be happy, Teddy Five! Halloween, Teddy Gras, Teddy Five! Also new this year is our 5th grade buddy program. Here, 5th graders are paired with kindergartners at a number of events like the Monday Morning Assembly and for classroom buddy activities. It's a great way for our 5th graders to mentor our younger students and to build leadership skills. It also brings our student body closer as we all work together to be Bulldog Strong.
Our Bulldog Dance and Cheer squads also competed for the first time this year, and both teams took home first place.
It's great to have so many fun after-school activities, and we appreciate all of our teachers and sponsors who spend their time helping us. Their dedication is positively amazing.
Hey, Carly, maybe next year, our Dance and Cheer squad should also form an astronomy club.
Why do you say that?
Well, they're all stars. Get it? All stars? Anyway. In other news, our school also hosted several new events to bring our families onto the campus this year, like the Mother and Son Dance, Father and Daughter Dances. These dances were a lot of fun, and everyone had a great time.
Our grandparents also had their own night. Grandparents' Night was a way for them to visit the classrooms and participate in their grandchild's learning by visiting a number of interactive centers. This night was all about family, and we were thrilled to have so many of our families participate in this event.
Well, that's about all the time we have for today.
But before we go, I wanted to congratulate my co-host and our school Student of the Year, Carson. He also won first place in Invention Convention. Nice job.
Thanks, Carly. And thank you all for tuning in, and we'll see you next time at LaCoste with more super news. Bye.
Nice job, Bulldogs. And now, let's hear more about our recent golf tournament held at the Links in Oak Harbor.
This year, 16 teams raised nearly $7,000 when the St. Bernard School Board's Lions Club hosted its 11th annual golf tournament. Beautiful weather truly benefited this good time for a good cause, as all of the proceeds will help to serve the children of St. Bernard Parish. The club supports an array of programs, including the Lions Eye Foundation, Project Graduation, Relay for Life, as well as providing emergency funds for families within the school system. The tournament is important because it raises both awareness and funds for the club. We appreciate everyone who took part in the tournament. Hey, Barry, do you know why Cinderella was such a terrible golfer?
Because she ran away from the ball.
No, because her coach was a pumpkin.
And speaking of coach, we'd like to congratulate our very own Butch Stockton on a very special honor. Recently, Coach was inducted into the Louisiana High School Basketball Coaches Association Hall of Fame. With over 40 years of experience and nearly 700 wins in his career, Coach Stockton has truly made a big impact on our student athletes and on the game that he loves so much. Congratulations, Coach.
And speaking of Chalmers High, let's meet the super news team there.
Hi, I'm Angela Mara Baron.
And I'm Devon Cruz, and welcome to Chalmers High for today's super news segment.
Well, get things started with a look at our recent awards night. The best and brightest of Chalmers High School's classes 2019 came together for a night of scholarships, awards... scholarships, awards, and special recognitions to cap off their senior year. Close to $1 million in scholarships were given. Other notable awards included Sage Monst, who received recognition for her 13-year record of perfect attendance; Lucas Caruso, who received the Tulane ROTC Scholarship valued at over $21,000; and Haley Abrams and Brian Williams, who were named as Posi Scholars.
60 seniors were also selected as Miro Scholars for academic artists and career tech educational pursuits. Each scholar will receive $1,000 for the next four years. This gift to the class of 2019 totals $240,000. Thank you to the Arlene and Joseph Miro Charitable Foundation for their continued generous support of our graduates.
They say that breakfast is the most important meal of the day, and recently, here at Chaminet High School, we celebrated a very important one, the PVIS Breakfast of Champions. Over 400 students were recognized at this event, created as a way to honor students for notable academic achievement and attendance in the fall semester. Students were invited to the breakfast for a wide array of awards, ranging from honor roll to subject area awards.
One of the highlights of this event was the Triple Crown Awards, which recognized students who scored an A or B in their courses for both nine weeks and on their final exams. We are proud of all of our students who achieved this special honor.
And now, we'll go from academics to athletics, as we salute our baseball and softball teams here at Chaminet High School, who once again made it to the state playoffs. Our sports team continues to fare well with a bevy of district championships for the 2018-2019 school year. Congratulations to all our Owl coaches and players for representing us so well.
And speaking of congratulations, the honors banquet was held recently, and this evening is truly an exciting time for so many of our students. Chords were given to all of our honor graduates to wear at graduation as a testament to their hard work, and the top graduates, including this year's valedictorian and salutatorian, were named. Congratulations to these top scholars.
Well, that will do it now here at Chaminet High School.
We will see you next time on super news.
In other news worth celebrating, Joe Sipolone, a curriculum coordinator in our district, was honored for his hard work, being named as the Outstanding Masters Graduate in K-12 Educational Administration for 2018. Joe was nominated for this award by the UNO faculty in recognition of his superior performance and professionalism while completing the degree program there. Congratulations, Joe.
Our High School Teacher of the Year, Chris Dear, also received some good news, as he was recently named as a state semifinalist for the Louisiana Teacher of the Year Award. We are proud of both of these outstanding educators and are happy they work for us.
And as we look ahead to the summer, we want to highlight our summer STEM program. Our program was so successful last year that we extended the camp for a three-week run this summer, including a week for our middle school students. The camp includes non-stop, fun-filled, hands-on science activities, as well as daily planetarium shows. More information can be found on our district website.
And of course, the summertime is when the academy makes its magic. This season, the talented performers of the summer program will bring Broadway to the Cultural Arts Center, when it presents the musical comedy, Once Upon a Mattress. This delightful retelling of a classic fairy tale will take to the stage at the end of June. Date and ticket information can be found on our district website below.
Summer is also a great time to learn the basics of water safety and swimming in our beautiful pool. Our annual swimming program kicks off in June, and more information about registration can also be found on our district website.
Well, that's about all the time we have for today.
Thanks for watching, and we'll see you next time for our special end-of-the-year episode.
Until then, we'll see you next time on super news, where we always let...
The super news roll!
We'll see you next time.
Alex, you always do a great job. Really appreciate it, and it showcases our system, our school system.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Daisy.
Thank you, Alex. Just watching the super news, it's just incredible how many extracurricular activities our students have availability to and our teachers are involved in also. Besides the everyday classroom work, you know, they're so involved with extracurricular and a lot of extra time put in by our teachers, and great job by all our students. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Daisy. Anyone else?
I just wanted to add that in addition to the, I think the boys and the girls, baseball and softball teams, they both made it to the state playoffs. In addition to that, the girls volleyball team, I think they went to the state playoffs. The girls basketball team went to the state playoffs. The boys cross-country team also went to the state playoffs. So, athletic program is really, in a well-rounded way as well, boys and girls. So, just wanted to add that to you. Super, and I don't want to steal your thunder, but...
It's perfect.
Thank you, Alex. Great job.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Anyone else? Thank you. Take care of that baby. Okay, move on to item number six, the Ag Center Annual Update. We have Mr. Dwayne Burgess with us. How you doing, Wayne?
How you guys doing?
It's always a pleasure to be here.
Every time I come here, I follow some sensational programs, you know? But that's terrific. I want to say something to you guys. What y'all did for those kids tonight was special, okay? And I want to recognize you guys for doing that, because when they were leaving, they had smiles on their faces that will be there for years. So, thank you for what you did for those kids, because sometimes, just a little acknowledgement means a big thing. Anyway, so I've got just a simple update. I'm going to be very brief, because I know you guys are tired, so am I.
A man speaks the truth. Thank you, sir.
So, I'm going to start with like Ag Magic. So, we did Ag Magic this year. It's our fifth or sixth year. I don't remember. And we had, we had a good turnout. I think the first day, maybe we had 400 and some kids. The second day, we had 500 and something. The third day, I think we had about 500 and something. And then Friday, it rained, okay? So, our numbers were down a little bit on Friday. I don't even remember what they were. And then Saturday, on our comeback day, we had probably around 200, 300 people that came back. But Saturday was one of those days where everybody was looking at the forecasts, and halfway through, what we were doing is supposed to have a flood, and it never did come. So, I understand that, and there was a lot going on besides. But I do want to recognize you guys and say thank you, because we can't do this without you guys. We can't do this without your support. You know, it means a lot to us. And being in the school systems and being able to have access to the kids to where that we can present programs with them and for them, it means a lot to us. And our summer is fixing to accelerate. We got 4H Camp in about three weeks for 4th, 5th, and 6th graders. We got short course, or they call it 4H University now, two weeks after that, which is for high school kids, 13 to 19. Then we've got, I got a state environmental camp that I'm taking some kids to, which is held at Rockefeller Wildlife Refuge. And then, you know, last year, for the first time, we did our own camp. We did an environmental camp with kids, and it was a three-day camp. And this year, we're going to extend it by a day. It'll start on Monday and go through Friday morning. And what we did was the first day, we took kids down to Port Eads, which is down at the bottom of the Mississippi River, showed them how to collect roseokane for the infestation problem they have down there. The second day, we were at the surf facility over at UNO, did water quality canoeing, showed them how to throw cast nets, a little bit about fishing, collecting odalis, which is a bonus in a fish's head, which is how they use to age fish. That's what the wildlife fishers uses to set their limits. And then, the third day, we took them down to Breton, and some guys took them out fishing, had some kids out there that probably never caught more than one fish, catched some nice fish. And then we spent that last night at the Atlantis Museum. And Mr. Highland gave them a good presentation about, you know, the history and culture of our area. So, we're going to repeat that again this year, and those are with high school kids. So, that's a brief synopsis, okay? And I said I would be brief.
Well, I'll tell you what, Wayne, is people like yourself that takes out our children, our students, and expose them to this, because normally, some kids don't get an opportunity to go there, you know, to see all of this stuff, what you're doing.
You know, Missy, I've always said, in our parish, if you don't hunt or fish, you don't know what this parish is.
Correct.
And I hate to say, but that's the way it is. If you don't have a reason to go to Breton, or Shell Beach, or anywhere else, you don't go. And we have a lot of kids that don't go, because they haven't been exposed to it, and we're trying to teach them environment and where they live.
Right. And also, you're teaching them leadership, too, at the same time.
Well, thank you.
Great. We really appreciate that. Anyone, Ms. Daisy?
Wayne, we just want to thank you for all you do for 4H, and also Lauren Faust.
She couldn't be here tonight. She actually has, her oldest is her birthday. She just graduated from Loyola. Her oldest just graduated from Loyola, what, two weekends ago? And then this Saturday, Friday, Saturday, her boy's graduating from Brother Martin.
Well, congratulations to...
So, she's been busy.
Yes. Well, thank you for, it just seems like every year, you all add more programs, and we understand that takes more time, and a lot of organizational skills and planning. And so, I just want to say thank you and to Lauren for all y'all do.
We appreciate that.
And I was able to go to Ag Magic. Unfortunately, it was on Friday. And, but the students were still learning. They had chicks and, you know, and all, and...
How'd you like the alligator display?
It was very nice.
Yeah. They were new this year.
Unbelievable.
And they did a real good job.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate that. I've always said 4H agents aren't too bright, because we keep loading ourselves up when we've already got a full plate, so...
Again, tremendous opportunities for our students, and so we thank you. And just one question on the 4H camp. Do students have to complete their booklet in order to go? Is that one of the...
No, ma'am, not for that. We have a system where, for 4H camp, really, all they got to do is pay. Now, there was a time years and years ago, 20-odd years ago, where we did have to complete their book to be able to go, but we haven't done that in a long time. And the way we do it now is, we don't have a requirement for 4H camp. What we do is, we have a requirement for our end-of-the-year field trips. So, we do three separate series of field trips with elementary, junior, and senior high. And the elementary school kids, their requirement is, they either do their record book, they turn it in, they're done, they qualify to go to the zoo, or they do, if they don't do the record book, they do one activity in the parish of all the activities we do all year long, and attend every club meeting. And if they can't do that, then the other requirement is that they come to two activities that we do in the parish. So, and if they do one of those three things, then they qualify to go to our, and we just finished those on Friday, our end-of-the-year field trips to the zoo.
Well, thanks again. And just one more kudo to you, Wayne. You really know how to cook a good crawfish eight-toe.
Oh, well, thank you.
I was able to attend one of the organizational meetings, and he cooked crawfish eight-toe. Excellent.
You can have to bring us some.
Next time. No, but again, thank you, because we can't do this job without you guys.
You do a fantastic job. We really appreciate it. And keep it up, sir.
And you all have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Move on to item number seven, the presentation of completion of school board training certificates for the year 2018. It's required by the state of Louisiana, the school board members must obtain at least six credit hours of extended education. And as I see here, everybody did so. So, we really appreciate this is for 2018. I know we went into 2019, most of us already have all of our hours already, but this is to show to the state and the ethics board that we have, we have finished our obligation to do these trainings. Thank you.
And let me just add to that, that, you know, professional development among all groups is extremely important. We have it for our teachers, because they have to keep up with the current trends and what we need to do to be successful teachers in classrooms. We have it for our administrators. So, it's just a matter, of course, that we should have it for school board members as well, because school board members are required to keep up with current legislation, to keep up with best practices in education that occur around the country. And it's very good to attend these particular sessions, so that everyone knows what is happening in education, not only in our community, but in the state and the nation. And we've been very fortunate, and as you can see, every one of our school board members, as required by law, has completed at least the minimum of those six hours of professional development and training, and many have exceeded that. So, I think we're very fortunate in St. Bernard Parish, and I'm just going to speak for me as a superintendent, and I know for the community members, that we have an incredible board who keeps up with the current trends, and when we establish policy, each and everyone knows exactly what he or she is talking about. So, we're fortunate in St. Bernard Parish to have that.
Thank you, Ms. Felchak.
And these will be, you know, read into the minutes, as we put them into the minutes, and published as well, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Felchak. Anyone else? Mr. Warner.
I just have to thank Ms. Shelby for keeping me on task, because I know I'm one of the more difficult ones that you have to try to marshal us all in and get our training done. So, thank you very much, Shelby. I appreciate you.
Okay, with that, we're going to go on with item number eight. Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Mr. England. Item number eight is...
An annual review of guide to student conduct. Is my friend Mr. Powell, or there's Mr. Powell? How are you, Mr. Powell?
Fine, thank you. Good evening to everyone.
Good evening to you.
The annual discipline committee meeting was held on May 7, 2019. The following recommendations, slash changes, are being suggested for the Guide to Student Conduct School Year 2019. In your folder, you should have a list of the committee members. You should also have in your folder a list of the proposed changes, as well as their guide to student conduct. The 2018-2019 Guide to Student Conduct on page nine, which talks about the dress code for high school, middle, boys, and girls. And it talks about dicky's. As you already know, we were supposed to wear dicky's, but the committee is recommending that, that be changed. Reason being is because the numbers have changed constantly, and it makes it very difficult for parents to keep up with the style numbers and things like that. So, for this year, 2019-2020, the committee is recommending any style khaki or navy color is allowed, as long as it is uniform pants. I think that would be a big help, a big change, so that the parents can go out and find a uniform that will fit the boys as well as the girl, and eliminate that style number, which was very difficult for parents and for young people to get. So, that's one of the changes that they're recommending. Any style khaki or navy color, just as long as it is uniform, it's a uniform code, pants, I'm sorry, it's a uniform pants, okay?
That makes sense to me. I mean, I'm sure it's a big challenge for our teachers and people and administrators that are going around and making sure, oh, is that a dicky's style 874, 563? I mean, who, you know, who knows? So, it makes sense to me.
Okay. The next proposed change on page 10, and I have it outlined, and as you could see, the committee is recommending that what I have outlined is removed. And in its place, the committee has recommended facial hair is permitted at the high school level only, provided that it is neat, clean, and well-groomed. No shaving designs are permitted. The principal will make the final recommendation regarding the acceptability of student facial hair. That is change number two that the committee is recommending. Yes?
Can you, can you go into, what was the purpose for that?
The committee felt that there's been a change, and they want to address some of the culture changes and some of the styles that the young people are going through right now. It seems that a lot of districts are going to this sort of change. And I also have a list of some of the commit, I mean, some of the school board that either recommended this change or not recommend this change. And I will read some of the districts that I have, either for or against that.
Another, I mean, this has been a major point of contention, I guess, for quite a few years now, as the styles change.
Yes.
This, you know, I guess sometimes, we have to look at what the culture is, not only within the community, but across areas, across our nation. Not only, but not only that, there are so many exceptions that we have to grant. Not only, but not only that, there are so many exceptions that we have to grant. There are religious exceptions that are sent in by ordained ministers or pastors that we have to acknowledge. And we're getting more and more, to be honest, medical doctors, personnel who are sending, we've got more students because of maybe facial medical issues with teenage boys, that they are getting medical excuses about not shaving as closely as they used to. So, it is a tremendous problem to keep up with that as well, and as long as it is clean and neat, more and more school systems are making the move to allow a little bit more latitude on facial hair and a few other things that we're looking into.
So, we're just talking about full-blown beards, you know?
Is there gonna be like a certain measurement, like, or is it, like, it says it's up to the principal, so, of each school, right?
It's only the high school.
High school only.
Only the high school, right. So, it'll be up to the principal to make that determination, that it's neat, clean, and well-groomed. And this has been recommended by just about the whole faculty at the schools, as well as the administration, and as well as the parents, so.
Answer to your question, it's gonna be, we're not gonna have something that's gonna be twelve inches or something like that. And that's why it's important that the principal will make that final recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
And the last change is, they want to remove, as you said, earrings for boys are prohibited. Now, the recommendation is earrings for boys. Boys are not permitted to wear dangling or hoop earrings, however, boys will be allowed to wear one stud per ear. The earrings can be worn in the earlobe at the high school level only. So, those are the proposed changes, and I said I had some lists of some of the parishes that kind of surveyed and got their recommendation, and I just want to mention a few of them, if that's okay. Saint Tammany, no to beards, yes to earrings. Plaquemine, no to beard, yes to earrings. Jefferson, yes to beards, yes to earrings. Livingston Parish, no to beards, only girls can wear the earrings. St. Charles Parish, yes to beards, yes to earrings. Tangible Hope Parish, no to beards. Pre-K to sixth grade studs only for girls. St. James Parish, yes to beards, and yes to earrings. Puffush Parish, yes to beard, yes to earrings. That's just a few of the parish that I kind of pulled, and so that give you an idea of the surrounding parish and what's happening. Those are the proposed changes that the committee, as I said, suggested changes that the committee is recommending. So, I present that for your consideration.
On the earrings, am I reading this right, half a dollar?
No, no, that was in the old proposal.
Okay.
What I should say, the earring was probably a stud, nothing dangling or anything like that.
Even for the girls, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Another, yes, we're not gonna have, the old proposal had something, what, they could not wear a size of a half a dollar. Most of these young folks don't even know what a half a dollar is.
The girls can wear like the small hoops.
Smaller hoops, right.
Okay, the boys, if this would go through, would be allowed studs.
And that's what the surrounding parishes are doing, just along them to wear their studs. Now, also must say, if the parish, it's in the lobe only, they cannot wear two, three, four, five earrings.
Or nose piercings.
No, no, none of that, no nose piercings, anything like that.
No facial piercings.
No facial piercings, no designs in the beards and stuff like that.
No nails in the hair.
No nails in the hair.
Okay, I can remember years ago, it seems, the reason why earrings were not allowed was in case there was ever, not that we have a lot of fights, I know we don't have many fights, but in case there was some fights, children could get hurt, but.
Again, yes, as I said, that was a safety factor, and so if this is suggested, that's why we suggested they stud.
They stud, okay. Okay, thank you. Ms. Dyson?
Thank you. Mr. Powell, was any discussion taken on the length of hair for boys?
No, we didn't bring that up, none of that was discussed.
Okay, it seems as though, you know, I've, I don't know if the high school teachers and administration has had difficulties abiding by that, but it just seems like some of the hairstyles, you know, go beyond the top of the shirt. So, is, you know, or as far as enforcing that, have we tried to enforce it, Ms. Votchay?
I would consider we're still enforcing that, yes.
You are?
Well.
They're allowed fasteners.
Fasteners, remember last, or two years ago, I think, we came, I came before the board, and we mentioned something about fasteners, that they can fasten their hair up, and so that it would meet, show the length of the collar. But we're still enforcing of the hair policies.
I was just wondering if the high school administration and the teachers are having difficulty enforcing that particular.
Well, it's not easy when you're doing dress codes and things like that. It's an ongoing situation, it's an ongoing problem, but I must say that they're doing their level best. They're announcing in the morning, they're being checked in homeroom, they're being checked on the hallway, just as well. Now, things are difficult, but the teachers, as well as the administration, are doing their level best to try to enforce the policy that you input.
Yeah, and my question wasn't whether or not they're enforcing it, it was just, is it becoming more difficult to enforce for them?
Yes.
That particular, that particular statement? And I know we've, you know, gone around and around on that for many years.
Yes.
But.
There was no discussion on the hair this year.
That's what, I was just curious to know if the discussion took place in that regard.
No, not on that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Oh, Mr. Long?
I'd just like to say, I'm glad we're not discussing hairstyles any longer. I mean, at one time, it was really a hot, hot button, hot button issue, and it's been relatively quiet for a long time, so the administration at the high school must be doing their, doing their job. We appreciate that.
Well, I must say that even at the middle, I mean, at the elementary and the middle school just as well, the faculty is doing a phenomenal job of trying to enforce the guide to student conduct in relationship to the policy that you passed.
Yeah, yeah, you're correct, I think they are all doing a fantastic job. We don't get a lot of complaints anymore like we used to.
No, not, no, not like we used to. But as I said, you know, you got changing times, you got changing young people, and you also have changing parents.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Warner.
You're welcome. Mr. Campbell?
Okay. I would like to move that we accept the recommendation of the committee and also give thanks to the committee. It's quite a job, and I agree with the changes of the dress code with the khakis and so on. It's gonna make it easier for the teachers, as well as administration of the schools. So, I would move that we accept and recommend this to the board.
Okay, we have a first by Mr. Campbell, any second by Ms. White. Do we have any other discussion? Mr. England?
Yeah, Mr. Powell, Mr. Warner was okay with that facial hair?
I wanna say yes.
Okay, I just wanted to get that clear in my head, because, and over the years, you know, we had this full discussions about, in fact, I was on this panel one time.
Yes.
And it was firmly, people were firmly against it, now we all for it, you know, so maybe times will change, you know?
Well, the last few years, they have been asking us to change it, and we have been deferring it, then we got a larger committee together, and with parental input as well, and the request is overwhelming to change.
Okay, I just wanted to get that clear, thank you.
All right.
That's it?
We have a motion by Mr. Campbell, second by Ms. White, all in favor? Make your vote.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Back to you, Mr. England.
Okay, we'll go to item number nine, which is the executive, Ms. Dyson?
Thank you, Mr. England. Yes, next item is the personal changes for May 2019, Ms. Votchay?
Okay, what you can see are just some of our normal end-of-the-year, a few transfers, retirements, resignations. The large list of the new hires and transfers will come to you next week at the regular board meeting. We had the job fair on Saturday. We are taking from principals their recommendations of who they are going to offer positions to, and we're in the process of doing that right now as we speak. We have been notifying some people that they are being recommended for positions, and we still have to get to others. So, by next Tuesday, you'll have a full list of everything which occurred Saturday as a result of our job fair. But this is just what we have, the moment, you know, the normal end-of-the-year people leaving us on retirement, and as you can see, we've got a retiree.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Mary Ellen Vogt is the retiree, she's a social worker, we want to thank her for her years of service with the St. Parry School System. And I just had a question, Ms. Votchay, how many participants were at the job fair?
Oh, we had about sixty to sixty-five people, so we had a really good turnout, yes.
And they were vying for how many positions, approximately?
That's difficult to say at this moment. So, about half will receive positions, maybe a little bit more than half, as we finish this up.
All righty, well, thank you very much. Okay, are there any other questions? Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate Kara Coburn, and thank the committee for her appointment. It's a difficult job at a middle school.
Yes.
To act as the disciplinarian. She has a tough job, especially following one of the best disciplinarians in Ms. Dennis.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Campbell, thank you so much for reminding me of that, that we do have to recognize, you know, Ms. Kara Coburn as the newly appointed assistant principal at Trist Middle School. She is an excellent educator, been here over twenty years, has taught English, I think she began a long time ago at Sebastian Roy, and has been at St. Bernard as well, and now it has been the instructional coach at Trist Middle School, so she's extremely very, very familiar, not only with the students, but with the parents and the entire workings of the school, so she is an excellent choice. And I know she's going to do a tremendous job as the new assistant principal at Trist.
Anyone else? Ms. Long?
Just briefly, Ms. Votchay, we, I know at one time we're having trouble finding math teachers, we still short in some areas?
We are still looking maybe for one or two middle school math teachers. We're in a much better position this year than we were last year. We feel very good about candidates we had this past Saturday, but as usual, the toughest position to fill is mathematics, which as we all know, is very near and dear to my heart. But at that point, yes, we, we are looking for math teachers, but we have quite a few who came to job fair that we will be offering positions to. But I could use another couple, so if anybody's out there who knows certified math teachers for middle or high school, please send them our way.
Okay, and what about like speech therapists?
Same thing with speech therapists, we're in a little bit better shape, we might be, we need one or maybe two more, depending upon the load.
And these are itinerant, right, correct?
Well, yes, they serve multiple schools, when you look at the different, it depends on the caseload at each particular school. It's another profession that if anyone is thinking about going into speech therapy, there is a tremendous demand for speech therapists, not only in school systems, but in hospital settings, and throughout the state. And when we talk to other school systems and communities, everyone is looking for qualified and licensed speech therapists, so that is another area that we could really use.
Okay, thank you.
An influx.
Mr. England?
Yeah, Ms. Votchay, what about the administration, some people in administration, are we gonna be moving some people up into the administration to help out? Because we are growing, and it's a business.
We are growing, and we are really thin, well, I'm looking into it. I don't move very quickly in those areas, but we're looking into it, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else, any questions or comments on personnel? I just want to end my congratulations to Ms. Kara Coburn as assistant principal at Trist, I've seen her in action, and of course, for many years, she was at, as you said, at St. Bernard and Sebastian Roy, and I just, I know she's gonna do an excellent job. So, congratulations to Kara Coburn. Okay, anyone else? All right, next item on the agenda, of personnel appointments, Ms. Votchay?
Okay, you have, Mr. Granberry actually has provided and put together a master list of what we have at this particular point in time. This is gonna change again for next week, and it's gonna change again over the summer. But for where we are at this point in time, just for your information only, we have provided a snapshot of where we are at this moment, okay?
Are there any questions? Okay, there being none, there's no action, we will move on to the next item, which is permission to mail letters of assurance. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped eleven. Okay, next item is personnel evaluation plan.
Each year, we just have to, if there are any changes made, we would have to bring them to your attention. Mr. Granberry had gotten the people together on the steering committee at this point, we're not anticipating any changes for the current year, so we would ask that you vote that there would be no changes or additions to our current personnel evaluation.
So, move.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Warner, second by Mr. Long, any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, okay. Next item is the permission to mail letters of assurance.
And this is something that we do each year, anyone who has substituted in our school system for the current year, we give them a letter of assurance saying that we. a letter of assurance saying that we would like them to continue in that capacity for the next school year. So this is mailed to every person who has substituted this year with our intentions to reemploy them in that capacity.
Are there any questions at this time, comments? Mr. Campbell.
I move that we accept the recommendation to send out the letters.
There's a motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Lamoyne. Any discussion? I have one question, Ms. Voce. As far as substitutes go, do we have an adequate number of substitutes on the list?
We can always use substitutes, whether it be classroom substitutes, bus driver substitutes, cafeteria substitutes, custodial substitutes, because as we know, on a daily basis, people are ill or people have doctor's appointments, people have personal business that they must take care of, and a school system is not like a regular business. There are children there each day waiting to either be taught, fed, transported, and we must have people to take those places. So yes, we are looking, anyone interested, please come in and fill out an application and we will be happy to walk you through the process.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Voce. Mr. Long.
To follow up a little bit, Ms. Voce, just to help people maybe to get, get interested in it, I think the salary they pay substitutes is, is a pretty decent salary, is that correct?
Well, it depends on the type of, of job.
Yeah.
And depends on what credentials you have. It varies. Yes.
So if, like a certified person or not, not, I guess you'd call them certified.
If, if the person is a certified day-by-day sub, I think it's eighty dollars a day. If you're a long-term sub where you're taking, and this is for a teacher now, maternity leave or some medical leave of a teacher, then we pay you a beginning teacher salary on a daily basis.
So that should encourage people to, to try it, okay? Thank you.
And then, Ms. Voce, the substitute bus drivers, they need to train prior to substituting, correct?
Oh, gosh, yes. We have to get them, and we're willing to, we train them at no cost to them. We train them to drive the bus. We help them to study for the exam because they have to have ACDL. You know, they have to have a license to drive the bus, just like everyone has to have a license to drive a car, special license to drive a school bus. But we go through the training, so it takes a little bit of time. But then those people become substitutes for us and then usually very quickly become permanent bus drivers for us. So anyone interested, again, contact us and we will provide the training. You don't have to go anywhere else to get it.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Voce. Okay, anyone else? There's a motion on the floor and a second, please cast your votes.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is request for permission to renew flood insurance. Good evening, Mr. Fernandez and Mr. Clemens.
We have Mr. Timothy Clemens from Clemens Insurance Services, Agents of Record. In your packet, you have the proposed renewal for flood insurance for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Insurance is once again through the natural flood insurance program as always, and we are recommending the renewal at a rate of a hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars. That's a slight increase over last year, about three point eight percent increase, which we were expecting, but that's our recommendation.
Yes, I will be sitting in for Mrs. Acevedo, who is not here. I'm also on that committee, so any questions from anyone? Huh? Any questions? Mr. Long?
I'll just move to recommend this to the full board.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Long. We have a second. Okay, miss, I have a second from Mrs. Lamoyne. You've had enough today.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Egan. I'm just wondering what, what the difference is in the price of the premiums for each one of these buildings? Is it because of the flood zone that they're in?
And then the elevation of each building, that's not in a preferred zone.
Do we have to get every one of these buildings at elevations, is there a way down on each one of them?
No, most of the ones I'm looking at are in a preferred zone, the preferred rate, however, some, do you have a better elevation than others, like Andrew Jackson's buildings that have been rated quite favorably by Bessie's? So now we're going to have to.
I'm, I'm finished, thank you.
Any further questions? Yes, Mrs. Dyson.
And what was the, unless I'm missing it, the cost last year?
Last year.
The premium?
A hundred ninety-eight thousand, I believe.
One eighty-eight? Okay, the total.
One eighty-eight oh seven one.
Okay, thank you very much.
No further questions? Please vote your machines.
Motion passes eight zero. Thank you.
Next on the, is request to approve results of the reading and language arts software request for proposals. Finance, Mrs. Dyson.
Thank you.
Catch back. I was going to pass as well.
Good evening, Ms. Good evening. I came before you a while ago to tell you that we were going out for a request for proposals for two software programs. Now, I want to explain the difference between going out for bids and going out for a request for proposals, okay? When you go out for a bid, you're looking really a lot at the price, okay? With a request for proposals, of course, you're looking at the price, but that's not the major component of it. We do a rubric to see what is the thing that best suits and meets the needs of our students and our programs, okay? So when we went out for the request for proposals, if you look at the first page, that was for the, the proposal for the guided reading intervention software. We only had one person who sent in a request for proposals, and that was Renaissance, and that is the AR program and the Star per, Star Reading program. So that was the only one that put in a bid, so, not a bid, a request for proposals, they sent a proposal. So that was eighty-two thousand, six hundred sixty-two dollars. It's on the front page.
Yeah.
I kept it on the front page. That's the program that we use with all the kids across the parish for AR and also for Star Reading to get their Lexi levels and to do the other stuff that we do with the computer software. The second thing is the one with reading intervention software, and, am I going to put the same thing? Yeah, it's, but this is supposed to be the developmental software, I'm sorry, but it's the second proposal on the skill-building software, and we did have five people that sent in a request, if you look at the last page. And we did a rubric to show what, the rubric was based on one to five, and if you look at it, we looked at every component of what we were looking for in the rubric, and at the bottom, I do have the prices. The only one that was cheaper than the one we chose was the second one from Moby Max, but it really did not meet the needs of what we were looking for. So the next one was Lexia Learning, and we use Lexia with every child in the parish. Also, in fact, this summer, we're doing a Lexia challenge. We're getting the kids to do Lexia over the summer because they can access all these programs from home. And I think in fifth grade through eighth grade, they're doing a big Lexia challenge with, an iXL challenge to get these kids ready for middle school. So, and we did recommend AR, I mean Renaissance for the first one, and, and I will change that second one to developmental software. And we recommended the second one for Lexia.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Harleton. Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Mrs. Dyson. So this is, the cost is ninety thousand and it's over two-year period?
No, it's a one-year period, okay? We have, we have the option to renew it for two more years.
So it.
All this software is so expensive that it's almost like to the point where they're pricing themselves out of how people, what people can afford, you know, because it's so, it's, it's priced very high. But it's not just Lexia and AR, it's a lot of the companies that we got the bids from, as you can see, not the bids, the proposals. But what we did with Lexia is we, we, we got, we paid nine thousand dollars for each school that we wanted licenses, and that means that they have unlimited use of Lexia, Power Up, which is a program for kids who are advanced at the fourth and fifth grade level that can move further, and then it's also for the kids at middle school that can move further. And they did a lot of enhancements with Lexia, which is included in this proposal.
So that's, it's for one year and then we have an option?
We have an option to.
If we decide to renew it next year?
It's the same price. They can't go up on the price.
Another ninety thousand.
For two years, yeah. Two more years.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? So we're going to need a motion at this time to accept the, the request for proposal and also the bid, okay? Ms. Lamoyne?
Yes, I move that we accept. Again, these, like Ms. Harleton said, these are critical parts of our literacy program for day-to-day interventions. They're used every single day.
They are.
And at home and over the summer. And, you know, it's really wonderful to see children chart the progress and the teachers use that as part of their planning, so.
And what's good about these two proposals is also that we don't have to do any more professional development because the teachers and the students and the parents know how to use it.
Absolutely. See, there's a continuity of services, so yes.
Right.
I move that we accept.
Okay, there's a motion by Ms. Lamoyne, seconded by Mr. England. Any further discussion? Okay, there being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Ms. Harleton.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next item is an adoption of the ad valorem millage rates. Good evening again, Mr. Fernandez.
Okay, in your packets is the proposed resolution to adopt the millage rates for tax year two thousand nineteen. We do this every year to set the millage rates, which will be applied to the property values and generate the ad valorem taxes for our district. We are proposing to, it'll be the same rates as last year, there will be no changes, and so submitted.
Okay, Mr. Warner?
Yeah, I just, we'll make a motion that we accept the administration's request for the, keep the millage rates the same for two thousand nineteen.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mr. England. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes. Oh, roll call, yes, you're correct, Mr. Campbell, thank you. Okay.
Well, this is just a recommendation.
It's just a recommendation to the full board.
We'll do it at the.
It'll be a recommendation to the full board and then we'll do a roll call vote.
Thank you for reminding us because we have to remember that for the full board.
Do you want to do a roll call?
You want, it's up to you. All right, let's do a roll call. All right. Mr. Campbell.
Hi.
Mr. Egan.
Four.
Mrs. Lamoyne.
Four.
Mrs. Dyson.
Four.
Mr. England.
Four.
Mr. Long.
Four.
Mr. Warner.
Four.
And Mrs. White.
Four.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Voce. Next item is the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty general fund and special revenue funds budget.
In your packets is the proposed two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty general fund and special revenue fund budgets. There are several exhibits, but basically we're proposing a balanced budget in the general fund. Exhibit one is the summary, which shows the total revenues and expenditures and anticipated ending fund or projected ending fund balance at the end of next year. And then following that, exhibits two and three are just details of revenues and expenditures. And exhibit four is, shows the changes in, anticipating changes in employee benefits for that year. So basically, basically the highlights of this, what we're doing is we're projecting revenues, stable revenues. We decreased sales taxes a little due to recent collections have been down a little bit, so to be conservative, we backed the estimate down from the current level. In terms of state revenues, we are projecting the MFP at its current level. As we all know, the MFP proposal for next year is in the legislature, but there's some uncertainty as to final form it's going to take, so we use the current numbers and we expect there to be a slight increase whatever happens. But we didn't incorporate that into the budget until we get the final figures. We should have that within the next month, I would imagine, but we will make that adjustment in the fall when we do our revised budget. We also have reflected the staffing for next year, all teachers and staff for next year in the different levels. There was a slight increase in one of the, one of the retirement rates and in group insurance premiums. We're going to have an increase at mid-year, so we also incorporated that into the budget. But other than that, we're confident in this budget. As I said, it's a balanced budget and we feel it adequately reflects operations for next year. Also is the lunch fund and special revenue funds budget. The lunch fund as well reflects what we think the operations for lunch fund next year would be, and that's exhibit number five. Exhibit number six is special revenue funds budget. Some of these are the actual allocations for next year and some of them are estimates because we haven't received the actual allocations next year. But those are basically the amounts we're going, expect to receive in those different grants next year, and we expect to spend the entire amount of those grants that we receive. So those are basically in and out with no fund balance at the end. So I would be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions at this time? It's a lot to digest. Yeah, thank you. You did a great job though, Mr. Fernandez, of your projections. Ms. Voce?
I, I would just like to comment, Mr. Fernandez talked about the MFP for next year, and I know everyone has been reading in the news that the version of the MFP that Bessie sent to the legislature included pay raises for teachers and sport employees, a thousand for teachers, five hundred for sport employees, and an increase in the per pupil expenditure of one point three seven five increase, which amounts to about fifty-four dollars per student. And that's to the tune of thirty-nine million that it would cost the state to do it statewide. The raises will cost about a hundred million statewide. There has been a little dissension in the legislature about if that per pupil increase should be included. The Senate, and I have to applaud our senators who represent us, J.P. Morel and Sharon Hewitt, both voted for the MFP that was sent over, which included it. In fact, the entire Senate with a vote of thirty-seven to one voted for that MFP, which should be the one passed, it should be beneficial for, for the state. In fact, twenty of the senators asked to put their names on it as co-authors of the resolution. Now it goes over to the House, and that's where we have the problem. We have some leadership in the House who feel that the per pupil increase should not be included in the MFP, and it is very difficult to get it out of the House Education Committee. If it gets to the floor of the House, we're hoping that the majority of the House members will pass that. I'm hoping that our state representative will be in favor of that. I have spoken with him. He says he is assessing the situation and will make the decision, you know, once he gets all of the information and if it comes before the full House. So I would urge everyone to, you know, talk with our representative and ask him to be in. in favor of the MFP if it comes before him for a vote, because we feel that it is necessary for our school system and our community to have that per pupil increase. We have not incorporated anything in our budget for next year because we don't know what version will come out, how much that will be, and if our employees will realize that raise. There was some discussion by House members, well, they'll give the teacher raise but not the per pupil, so they'll put, just put it into the budget. If they do that, it is a one-year stipend. If it is not inside the MFP, then it is not recurring. So if it's outside of the MFP in the general appropriations bill, it will not be a raise, it will be a stipend, and then we will have to go back next year and try all over again. So it's really critical, hopefully, that the, our legislators in statewide realize the importance of this. Our state senators have realized the importance and have spoken almost unanimously, and we're hoping that the same holds true with our state representatives in the House.
Okay, are there any questions or comments at this time? Mr. Warner?
Go ahead, Ms. England.
Oh, Mr. England?
I just hope that the representatives don't, don't vote the party line. You know, they vote what's good for the education, for the good of the children of the state always in here. And it is a critical need in our state for, for these funds to come to our public school system at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Warner?
I, I, I agree with Mr. England, stay away from the partisan. Let's just do what's right for the people of the state for once and not worry about which party it's gonna benefit. But I'll also make a motion that we send the 2019, 2020 general fund, special revenue fund budget to the full board with the recommendation.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Warner, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms., Ms. White had her hands up there, so, okay, second by Ms. White. Further discussion? Um, Ms. Vouchet, I have a question. You said on the, the piece with the MFP for per student, it's fifty-four dollars increase per student, correct? Have you calculated what percentage that is of the total per pupil expenditure by any chance?
One point three seven five percent.
It's one point three, okay. So one point three seven five percent, three seven percent, and what's the cost of living at this, um, increase at this time?
I don't know, but we have not had a, we have had one per pupil increase in the last ten years. So for nine of the ten years, it has remained static. At the inception, and, and at the risk of, I'm gonna try to not make this lengthy, because this is something, you know, I was on the original MFP Study Committee, we put this formula together back in the early nineties. It has been modified a little and changed over the years, but the entire, the intent was that per pupil would increase by something that approximated a cost of living increase each year, like social security does, or some of the other types of financial programs in our state and, and national government. So a few years back, oh, I don't know, maybe fifteen years or so, the percentage that was recommended that it increase each year was two point seven five. Well, we haven't seen that at all. And only, like I said, only once in the last ten years, and that has been an increase of only one point three seven five on the per pupil. The other piece of it went to raises, oh, I don't know, maybe six, seven years ago. So having said that, if that two point seven five would have been applied each and every year, we would not be in the situation that we're in now. We could have passed it on to our employees, our teachers would be paid more, our support personnel would be paid more, and we would have the resources to fund the types of things we just talked about, our reading programs, our literacy programs, you know, transportation for our students, all the things that we have to supply to them for a well-rounded education. We wouldn't be, we wouldn't have to hold our breath and hope the state gives our teachers a thousand dollar pay raise and our support five hundred. Those increments could have been placed in each and every year, and our teachers and support employees could have been paid much better had that per pupil been in the formula and applied each and every year. But we understand the financial condition the state's been in the last few years, and we're very thankful that it was not cut and worn, but we're in a situation in Louisiana this year where the money is available, and the investment in education is paramount. And you can't pit one educational group against the other. You can't say, if you, if you give to K to twelve, you can't give to early childhood or to higher education. Different groups should not be pitted against each other. The investment in education in a state of Louisiana is extremely important, and we're asking for a fifty-four dollars per student increase. That'll buy one textbook, maybe, and that's about it. So it's not a lot of money to ask for, and we've only gotten one in the past ten years. So it's important.
Thank you, Ms. Vouchet. And you know, a lot of politicians, when it comes up, Tom, for elections, they say, oh, educations are priority. Well, it's time that they prioritize education and put the money where it really belongs. Like you said, once in ten years, you know, they increase the MFP, per pupil expenditures, and, you know, again, fifty-four dollars is nothing. And as we saw tonight with the instructional materials, they continue to rise, you know, the instructional material, that's why I asked about the cost of living increase. Everything else is, is rising. Our costs are rising, the unfunded mandates of liability is the insurance for, for our employee, everything's rising, you know, and less than, what is it, like eighteen percent is spent on instructional material and other costs, you know, so.
So much is tied up in salaries, benefits and fixed costs.
Salaries, benefits, fixed costs, and many of those costs we don't fix. It's the state mandates that are fixing a lot of it. And so, anyway, I wanna add to the urge of our legislature to please think about our students first and put the money where it belongs, the little bit of money that they're even thinking about, so. Anyone else?
Just briefly.
Mr. Long?
I'm just baffled as to why would pass so overwhelmingly in the Senate and, and the House? I know it's an election year and the governor first proposed it, raising teacher pay and putting it in the MFP. Is it that maybe they don't wanna give him a victory in an election year? I'm not sure. It seems like they play in politics with, with, with education. And that, that, you know, that's sad. That's sad. And I think they're all up for reelection this year, right? Senate and House? At least I know the House is, I'm not sure about the Senate.
Every two years for the House, the Senate's a little longer, so.
Okay, so, yeah, the Senate may not be, but we'll agree with Mr. Isart, I think we, you know, it's time for them to, to step up and, and do what's right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, it's been a little lonesome. There is a motion on the floor.
Yes.
In a second, to approve the general fund and special revenue. Okay. Be an motion in a second, please cast your votes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, next item is a request to approve the bid tabulation for paper cleaning and custodial supplies.
Okay, in your packets is the bid tabulation. So this bid, it's an annual bid and it details the bids on each item. We are recommending the low bidder on each item.
Are there any exceptions? Any exceptions, Mr. Fernandez?
No exceptions.
Okay.
I'll move that we recommend it to the full board.
The lowest bid on each item?
Lowest, lowest bid. I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Long, it's second by Mr. Warner, any discussion? Okay, there being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is a request for permission to advertise the solicitation of quotations for fresh fruits and vegetables for the 2019, 2020 school year. Good evening, Ms. Bloom.
Good evening. This first request is so that we could advertise for our produce, because it's a monthly solicitation, and these are all the dates listed. It is on the fifteenth with the exception of weekends and holidays, and those are listed in the background, information for you. That'll be for a whole school year, fiscal year, well, a fiscal year.
Okay, any discussion? Is there a motion on the floor at this time?
I'd like to make a motion that we send it to, recommend it to the full board.
There's a motion by Mr. England, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Lamoyne, any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Next item is a request to approve the bid tabulation for spices and seasonings class two, cereal, dried beans and crackers, class three, frozen foods, class five, meat and meat products, class six, poultry and eggs, class seven, seafood products, class eight, and canned goods, class nine.
We're asking permission to accept these bids for a six-month period. We, we received bids from three vendors and we've tabulated the bids and/or requesting that we have chosen the lowest bidder for approval.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor at this time?
I'll make the motion that we accept the bids.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mr. Long, to accept our lowest bids. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Next item?
Pardon?
Thank you for staying late.
Oh, yeah. Next item is a request to approve the bid tabulation for milk and milk products for July first, 2019 through June thirtieth, 2020.
This bid, this request to accept the bids, we received bids from two vendors. This is a all or nothing bid, and we have chosen the bidder that got the lowest overall price, if you see on the second page, the bid tabulation. And this is for milk and milk products that we use in our school cafeterias and throughout our district during the school, the fiscal year.
Oops. Okay. And you said it's an all or nothing bid, right?
Yes, this one is.
Uh-huh. Okay. All righty, is there a motion on the floor at this time to accept the lowest overall bid? Mr. Egan, do you accept the lowest total?
Thank you. I'm like, we should have raised that.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Egan, seconded by Ms. Lamoyne. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Children need milk.
Motion passes eight to zero.
All right. Okay. Next item is a request to approve the bid tabulation for bread and bread products for July first, 2019 through June thirtieth, 2020.
And this is a yearly bid, a line item bid. We received bids from three vendors, and we chose in each case the lowest bidder for the items that we requested.
Is there a motion on the floor? There's a motion by Mr. England, is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. White, to accept the lowest bid. Any discussion? Mr. Long?
Quick question. I, I recognize Leidenheimer.
Yes.
But Bimbo Bakery, is that a local group?
Well, actually, that's Sara Lee Bread, that's the corporate name.
Bimbo.
For Sara Lee, and there are other names that go under that, you know, those little names that you see in the grocery store. It's out of, that company is out of Texas. We are getting our bread from them for the last two years, and they've done a good job. They have a local distribution center.
They do have one local?
Right, so they come, you know, several times a week, and then we, we have no problem and we get the kind of bread, they have the child nutrition specifications that we need, and we've been really happy with that particular company. But when you hear Sara Lee, you know what that bread is. Of course, the bread that we get is sort of like generic labels, because it's child nutrition, you know, specification, so you're not gonna see a label like that. But that's one of the, I guess, sub-companies that they represent, so in the grocery store, you, you are eating that bread, you just don't know.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. You don't know.
I'm not gonna make a comment on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Good question, Mr. Long. Okay, anyone else? Okay, please cast your votes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Bloom, for staying late and you being at the, at the end of the agenda. Thank you. Mr. England?
Thank you, Mr. Isart. Item number twenty-two, superintendent's recommendation.
Uh, just to remind everyone that y'all tonight recommended the budgets to the full board, but we will also have a public hearing as we open the board meeting next Tuesday night at six o'clock, public hearing on any part of the budget. This is the last week of school. We had graduation last week, which was very successful, obviously. Schools are wrapping up. We've got our kindergarten, fifth and eighth grade ceremonies tomorrow, so everyone is looking forward to that. The kids will come to school Thursday for the last day, and the teachers will have records day on Friday. And then we'll immediately go into summer programs the following week and.
Back at it.
Professional development and training and getting set up for next school year. So we've had a good school year so far, so.
That's a miss.
Oh, I do, I do wanna say this. Today, we had a, at Andrew Jackson Middle School, we had a fan belt on one of the units burnout, which caused some of the smoke to go through the vents. So of course, we went to our regular fire drill mode and evacuated the kids. And I wanna thank Tommy Stone of the, the Fire Department, who were there, obviously, very quickly, as well as our own maintenance staff, and detected the source of the problem. And Chief Stone talked with our students, and he called me to compliment the administration and the staff at Andrew Jackson Middle School for such an orderly and well-run incident today, I guess, where, and he talked to all of the students and congratulated them, talking about how he was just so impressed with the way that they left the building, waited outside until the, he and his staff made sure that everything was safe and secure and moved them back in. So in his words, he just said, we, we run such a wonderful operation, and I do wanna compliment Ms. Andrea Lichardi and Mr. Lars at Andrew Jackson and the entire staff for that little activity this morning, and the students themselves. And Ms. Lichardi then, of course, to make sure that all of our parents were informed, did one of those all calls to let everybody know that it was a fan belt that just burned and caused some smoke to go through the vents, and that was quickly cleared up.
Thank goodness, it was just a minor thing.
It was just minor, thank goodness, yes.
It's in practice.
Right, right. I just wanna remind board members, next Tuesday, we will be convening here at four forty-five. We have a hearing that we must attend, so try to make it, you know, it's very vital to some people, so. It's four forty-five, it's a hearing.
It's a hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, item number 23. I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. England. And I would ask Ms. Votchay, if you, you mentioned graduation and it was a wonderful graduation and we have so much to be thankful for here in St. Penoi Parish and our students, the high school graduates have excelled tremendously. And Ms. Votchay, if you would share, I know Mr. Warner went, you know, and in the program, they had all the scholarships that our students received and it's incredible, the opportunities that they are taking advantage of, but they earned these scholarships. If you would share with our viewers and the public, just how, what the total amount of scholarships were.
Almost $9 million in scholarships for this class, but just as importantly, half the class, 50 percent of the class earned college credit, whether it be through career and technical classes or strictly through academic classes and through the advanced placement program, as well as dual enrollment. And, you know, it's, it's great for the students to get a head start on post-secondary by earning that. It's wonderful for the parents to know too, that that's, that much less they are going to have to pay in college tuition because we've got so many students who have earned so much college credit while they're still in high school. We had five of our graduates who not only graduated from high school, but simultaneously graduated from Nunez Community College with an associate degree in applied sciences through the PTAC program, which is quite an accomplishment. You have to be a very committed student to do both. So, we're very, very proud of this graduating class. We're proud of our teachers and faculty members, not only at Sherman High School, but throughout our school system in preparing students for the next step. And our dual enrollment classes are continuing to grow, our career in technical classes continuing to grow. And through that National Advanced Placement Program, Sherman High is a school, an advanced placement school of distinction, not only an A school in the state accountability program, but has gotten honors throughout the country for our students' participation and excellence in the advanced placement program, which earns college credit. So, we had two posse scholarship winners. In fact, Ms. Benazak right here, her niece is the recipient of one and has a full ride to University of Notre Dame on one of these scholarships. So, this is a fantastic program and our kids get every opportunity to do well in high school and simultaneously earn college credit as well. Oh, and we've had several, we've had several, several of our students joining the military. We had one young man get an ROTC scholarship to college based upon his, his participation in ROTC throughout his high school career. So, we're preparing students not only for traditional colleges, but for career and tech ed programs with a great many industry-based certifications and for the military as well, if that is what they so choose.
That's it, Ms. Taisor? Okay, anyone else? If not, item number 23, adjournment?
Move with adjourn.
There are motions on Mr. Campbell, seconded by Mr. Taisor. All in favor?
Aye.
This means a adjourn. Good evening.
Okay, just real quick, Mr. England mentioned.